Good evening. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. Today is April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
I want to apologize in advance before I call this case because I know I'm going to not say the name correctly. Bizyaviv? Thirty-nine Red Oak Lane?
Yes, thirty-nine Red Oak Lane. I'll turn your mics off.
You know, I thought it was.
It's on now.
Is it on now?
Yes.
Okay. So you didn't hear my mispronunciation?
No.
Good. You'll have to, you'll have to help us with that.
So if you'd come forward, speak into the microphone.
My name's Adam Campania, I'm the architect.
Help please, help us with the name. Bizyaviv?
Bizeyev.
Bizeyev?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, as best as I know. Yeah.
So if you could describe the request, please.
Sure. The client hired me for this small project. It's a small interior renovation. There's no dispute to sort of a bathroom expansion. And then there's a component in the outside for patio. It's a quarter raker lot. So this very small patio needs a zoning variance, mostly for the rear yard and to some extent on the side. The building is basically built on the rear yard line. So anything that goes into the rear yard would require a variance. If you look at the site plan, it's essentially an L-shaped six-hundred-square-foot dry-laid patio. Just to provide the family, three small boys, just some outside area to have a table and, you know, a little player in. There's a slight discrepancy, I believe, in the objection sheet. Because, I guess, the survey just is two feet off. I think it says I'm asking for seventeen feet. I'm asking for fifteen. But same thing. So that's essentially the project, the patio. Originally, the client had longed deck. And I told them, given the scale of the lot and sightlines and the fact that we would require a variance, a patio would be a better idea.
So, given the size of the house, the patio is quite large. What, what is the purpose of the patio? How will the patio be used?
I mean, it's six-hundred square feet and in an L shape. So essentially, you would put a barbecue in the corner, you know, safely away from the house. And then have a table for six and maybe a small table for children. It appears large. It's really not when you scout that out. It's a relatively small lot.
And how do you view the construction of the patio as it relates to neighbors on either side?
It's a very simple project. It's not going to be a slab. It's a dry lay. So it's just, you know, a few days, some excavation, you know, stockpiling the dirt and bringing in the stone. The site plan shows a clear path for construction work and a fence. So I think it's a pretty straightforward.
Do you know where the nearest neighbor is? Is it to the side? Is it to the rear?
To both sides and to the rear. Yeah. I mean, there's one, I guess, the way those were built, there's always the driveways to the left. So the next driveway is, sorry, I've got a point. Yeah. The next, closest neighbor is here. There's a, there's a neighbor back here. And then there's a larger sort of lot clearance here and here.
Is there any screening, any vegetation that, that exists or is planned for the area?
There's a six-foot fence and they're going to start, they've just done the house, I think, since the summer. So they're going to start adding vegetation. And I believe that'll also help with groundwater absorption. That's, you know, there is a neighbor that has this oversized kind of deck, which is kind of, you know, when you're standing on it, they stand over the fence line. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted them to be on the ground plan with us.
Right. Okay.
Could you expand on the discrepancy in the site plan? You said, you don't need fifteen, you don't need seventeen?
If you look at the, he has it right here, right? It's now a suggestion sheet.
Yes. So he's got seventeen.
Right. So the, the rear yard technically should be thirty-five. The survey I had says the building is thirty-three.
You know, just, you can quit right now. We consider seventeen. Are you making a case for only to be fifteen?
No, I'm not making a case. I'm just, I just mentioned that there was a slight discrepancy, but it's essentially the same thing.
Mr. Chairman, if I will, the house is nonconforming. It's set at thirty-three feet and a few inches, where thirty-five is the setback. So therefore, that's where the seventeen comes from.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to be sure we didn't have to read the notice thing and go through a whole bunch of stuff that you obviously not want to do.
Right.
We'll stay with, I'm happy with seventeen.
And do you know who Sarah Thoring is?
Is that a neighbor?
Yes, at forty-three.
That one neighbor, the neighbor who wrote a positive.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is she the one with the, the deck or?
Does the address say on there?
Says forty-three. Your address is thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. No, so that would be, I suppose, two of them.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, Matt Boyd? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Yes. Please come forward. If you could state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Claire. You and my mother and I are residents of Twenty-seven Pine Bureau, which is the house that we have the backyard adjacent to the house's backyard.
Okay.
And we also have been longtime residents and taxpayers of the town of Newcastle since two thousand and five. So we wanted to come here today to state our concern about the proposed project. And I have a question specifically about the part of the application that states water won't be flowing onto adjacent properties. We believe this is not true. And additionally, the application.
I'm sorry, my fault. I, I missed that. Did, could you just repeat what you just said?
Yes. So item seventeen, the question, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge, either from point or non-point?
Okay.
The question seventeen A says no to will stormwater discharge flow to adjacent properties?
So could you just help us understand, is your property at a higher or a lower level? It's at a lower level? Okay.
And I can, I was going to go into this, but we have prior experience with significant water flowing onto our property and causing flooding.
Is this, is this with the prior owner or?
This is during the construction of the new house and has been ongoing.
Okay. And is there, could you just help us understand, what is it that separates you and, and this property? Is it, is it lawn? Is it shrubbery? Is it trees? What, what is it that separates the two properties?
So today is only the six-foot fence. Prior to that, we had shrubbery across the entire property line. That was removed as part of the construction. And so that is part of the reason why we're seeing a lot flooding.
Okay. And did you find that there was water infiltration when the shrubbery was there?
No.
There, there wasn't?
Yes.
Okay. It's now that the shrubbery's been removed?
Yes.
That there isn't something there to restrict the flow? Okay. I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt you.
No worries. Thanks for the question. And then, yeah, so then I have a question about seventeen B. As the response was yes to will stormwater discharge be directed to establishing bayon systems? If yes, briefly describe. So I would like to understand what the plan is to make sure that stormwater does not come onto our property.
Okay.
And then just to kind of share a little bit more color about some of the problems that we've been seeing since the construction of the house started and the shrubbery was removed. So kind of restating, our house is downhill. We've had severe flooding issues in our basement since construction started on the house. Prior to this, as I said, we've lived in the house for almost twenty years. And we've never experienced flooding like this prior to that.
Okay.
And I will show some pictures of what we've experienced. This is from May twenty-eighth of last year. This is from July sixteenth of last year. Not sure anybody know. I'll show you, like, this is our yard.
That jury yard, okay.
So you can see.
So this is the water cascading out here. Okay.
Is that enough?
Yes.
This is also from December sixteen of last year.
So December of last year. When was construction occurring? Obviously during this period, right?
Started in the summer.
That one is after the construction. The new owner moved in. That's the present day, the most present day.
I understand what the construction is.
This is a new.
It's a house? Well, it's a construction, right?
It was a tear-down foundation and rebuilt, and it was sold to this new owner.
And the house has been built and rebuilt now?
Yes. Fully completed, has a CO, and there's a new owner of it. Yes.
And Tom, that came in front of the zoning board, right? Because I see some.
There was a garage that was built on, yes, the garage was built on the south side, and that came in front of the zoning board.
And just to add, at the time, we had kind of like communicated with the town as well as the owner at the time to express our concerns. And that plan, I believe, was under the, I guess, the maxim, the maximum for like meeting the threshold for stormwater prevention. So it was like under a thousand square feet. So our concern is now we're introducing a plan that also falls under that limit. And so we don't see any plan to introduce any sort of solution to prevent water from flooding into our property.
I think we understand. Thank you. I'm sorry, did you have anything else you wanted to add? I think we understand your concerns and your comments.
Okay.
Just want to.
If you could introduce yourself, please.
My name is Sutin Zhang. I live in this address since two thousand and five.
Okay.
Both of my girls grow up here. And I've been really good neighborhood for my neighbors.
Right.
So I did not want to cause a problem. I wanted to live here. So last year, when they caused a problem, I start to communicate with the builder. But they told me they did not, they followed the regulation. And I contacted the town engineer. They came over to took, take a look. And they said, okay, we tried to help, but they followed the regulation. But at that time, they, the pipe just next to my real yard. So I asked them, that's the, I don't really want to see everything since the construction. It's my nightmare again. I really don't know why the, the zone, because the engineer told me the zone changed. Because before is five hundred, now it's one thousand. But the, if they use, they want to build the patio with the construction of the, the renovation, that were more than one thousand square feet. At that time, they need to do the stormwater drainage. But they fought, they say they followed the regu- regulation, they don't have to do that. So that's my concern. If they do it again, that, I don't know what to do.
Okay.
I want to bring my concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I don't know. Are you in a position to address any of?
Well, the first I'm hearing.
I, I'm sorry, you need to speak into the micro.
I'm happy to base.
I'm sorry, you need to speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Hi. I'm sorry you guys are having problems. I'd like to just kind of maybe suggest a solution that works for everybody. My, I don't know why their problem increased. It could be the result in regrading from the new construction that's causing a faster runoff towards the fence. It could be the removal of shrub line and planting along one or both sides of that fence. So the two things that I would basically suggest that I think will, will help everybody would be, one, this patio is actually going to result in a slight regrading on the lower velocity of that water towards that rear yard line. And two, I can have my client just put in planting, you know? I think if we just do a two- or three-foot line of garden line or shrubbery or something, that are more absorptive than the lawn, that should take care of it before it crosses the fence line. I don't, I don't think that, you know, this isn't going to get worse. We're solved via the patio. So I think the owner is allowed to do the patio, but we also have them do other soft landscaping. I think that would be good for everybody, and everybody would benefit.
Well, I think what the board is going to ask is, we'll, we'll continue this matter. We would ask you to go back, consult with your client, and come up with a new plan. Not a new plan, a, a plan that addresses these issues. I would encourage you to discuss them with the neighbor.
Absolutely.
So that they have some comfort level that this is being addressed. Tom, is there anything, I guess the town engineer has been out. Is there any more that the town should do in terms of inspection or review?
The town engineer has reviewed this file, has deemed it to be less than a thousand square feet, has put the authority in the zoning board, if they'd like a stormwater review, to request that. But we also need to state that Westchester County Board of Health has to give a letter of no objection because the patio is very close to the fields, the laterals for the septic system, and there may not be proper separation. And there is no room to put any stormwater mitigation behind the patio on the downward side because of the septic fields that are there. So this becomes a little more difficult to solve. So if the board would like to adjourn this and have the town engineer look further, he'd be happy to work with the applicant.
One, one thing to bring up, just in my mind. Before the new house was constructed, apparently, according to the neighbors, there was no problem. So when they did the tear-down and built a new house without the existing foundation, did they regrade the property in any way? Or is it still basically the same grade as it was before? We, we should know that. Because if they regraded it and caused this problem, then they have to fix it.
In my opinion, the problem is on the south side of the house, or was on the south side of the house where the old garage was constructed. The previous owner did do some mitigation and piping and drainage collection to help alleviate this at the time of construction after that occurrence of that storm event. So, you know, has this happened again? Have you had flooding after that was corrected?
That's why I showed the picture December sixteen, after the house closing. And I asked them to remove the pipe. Since after that, still flooding.
So according to the neighbor, the, it has not been solved a hundred percent. So at, at this point, an engineer may need to be involved to look at the grades, pitch, the water collection.
Right. Okay. So we're going to continue this matter, we'll pretend next month. I make a motion that we continue this matter to the meeting.
Also.
Chairman Ken Cooper. Tony Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
Jackie Hutton. Keep these in the record. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Carrick.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
Carrick, Lee Pyleman Avenue.
My name's Stanley Wong, I'm the architect.
You just have the photo?
Yes, yes.
Start the photo?
Yeah. So this is a, for a ramp, an ADA ramp.
Sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
So I'll explain. What we're doing is putting an ADA ramp from a gravel parking lot to a condo that my clients just bought for their elderly parents. It's a kind of a torturous route to get from the parking area to their front door. So we just want to make it better. We don't have to do an ADA ramp, but if we're going to do any kind of ramp, we might as well follow some standard. And ADA requires that a proportion of the ramp where you're turning needs to be five feet for a five-foot turnaround. And that puts us not as of right, because anything over four feet in that zone is considered a terrace. So just to get your bearings, the red square is the gravel parking lot. The green is the route we're going to that half of that first building. Across the street on Highland is the Habitat for Humanity project. This is a view from the lower patio looking at the gravel parking lot. You can see just hard-packed gravel, railroad ties, and random stones put in years ago. Turning to the right, our ramp is actually going to follow along that rubble wall towards that yellow case. Next one. Oops. And then it's going to make a turn to the right of that yellow case. And next. Uh, next. And then there's their front door. We're actually going to build a, a wood deck at that point so the water can still percolate down there and, and get back over to where it was, it was going before. Because we're, I'm standing with the camera, there's a whole set of stairs there, so the water can't go anywhere. And that's it, I think.
So am I correct that this is a nonconforming?
Correct.
Lot to be dealt with, right?
This is a multifamily zone, capital Y zone, where fifty feet is required.
Okay.
So you need a ramp from the stairs, but then it, doesn't, doesn't it level out after the stairs to the front door?
Yes, but to get an ADA ramp, it's a very shallow one-to-twelve pitch. So to get all of that pitch to, to match a standard, you need a long ramp.
Okay.
So for every twelve inches you have to traverse vertically, you have to get a twelve feet. So it's really long. Are there any other ramps that you're aware of in this particular area? Not that I know of. I haven't walked with the whole complex. And these, the, the two condos at the corner are actually older buildings than the rest of them.
Right.
The one my client bought used to be a dentist's office.
You've gotten approval from the, from the board?
Yes. And they approved for the owner to pay for the ramp and do all the changes. We've sent the drawings and they've approved it.
And the other residents in these house, like, have no problem with this? Have you had any feedbacks on that?
There's no, there's been no negative feedback. The neighbor next door just wants to make sure that she can still access her door during construction.
Understandable.
Does anyone else, will anyone else use this ramp where they're, access their properties?
Those two parking spaces are just for those first two. The, the first building was just two condos. So it would only be for those two units.
So the other, the neighboring condo would have to walk down the ramp?
No, I provided stairs for them directly to their door.
There will be stairs for the others.
And, and better stairs than railroad ties.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Any other comments, questions, Matt Boyd? I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Chairman Ken Cooper.
Aye.
Tony Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move the Carrick application for a front yard setback on King Street at thirty-two feet, a front yard setback on Highland of thirty-nine feet for the construction of a ramp, accessible ramp. Be approved for the following reasons. This is a nonconforming, pre-existing, nonconforming site. The applicant has been thoughtful in his application of the ADA requirements for a ramp of this sort. There will certainly be no change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The requested variances are substantial, but for understandable reasons. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And the alleged difficulty, given the circumstances, is not self-created. You have six months to start, one year to complete. And what would you like to see, Tom, in terms of a survey? An as-built?
An as-built would be.
An as-built survey, please. Let the record show there were no neighbors who spoke opposition to these reasons.
Second.
Chairman Ken Cooper.
Aye.
Tony Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
And just for the record, the, I believe, Mr. Chairman, you said a front yard of thirty-two feet. It's a, the variance is thirty-two feet. The front yard setback will be eighteen feet. So just to clarify for the record. The distances.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
You're welcome. Nine, very swing.
Good evening. I'm Lucchese, I'm the architect. Here in the house, Michelle. We're looking to construct an addition, a garage and bedroom addition, and also increase or just slightly increase the porch, the existing porch that's there. So the existing house is not conforming to the front yard setback. So anything that we do to the, you know, house pretty much would require a zoning amendment. What we're looking there is the side of the house. This is where we're going to be adding the addition. So we're not increasing any impervious surface. We're taking away a little bit of driveway space. So we're not changing the topography at all. So I think that's a plus. And again, bedrooms are all on this side, so that's why we're considering to add the bedroom and also extend the garage. Because right now, the garage is a little unusable, the size that, that's there. That's the front of the house. The existing steps are pretty much there. What we're looking to do is extend the front porch a little to the front and also to cover, you know, the brickwork that's there and make it a nice usable front porch to, to sit on.
So the steps will come out a little bit. Come out, yeah. Another shot of the front of the house. Jack, can you do the survey?
Yes. Give me one second. I'm going to stop sharing because that's someone else.
So the existing lot size is just over an acre, and this is actually a two-acre zone. So we're, you know, nonconforming in the size of the, the lot. And then I think that's what happens to, you know, the, the setbacks because of the lots. A little bit smaller where they placed the house was a nonconforming front yard setback of, you know, basically sixty-one feet. And now we're asking for, you know, a slight variance to extend the front porch a little bit to the front. So it's a little hard to read, but the addition is, to the right, you can see where the driveway is. If you could blow that up a little bit.
Okay, with me. I'm trying to figure out how to zoom in.
Jackie?
No?
Control and scroll up. Scroll up. Command maybe on the Apple.
It's a Mac, and I don't know how to use it.
Mac and fine glass?
Yeah. You could also.
I'm sorry, guys.
No, it's okay.
Here, I'll be your Vanna. I'm sorry, guys.
Actually. Michelle, yeah, just point to the addition, yep. That's where the addition's going. That's where the porch is going, and 51, 59 is to the, like I said, to the new porch, which, you know, is pretty much there already.
All right, we can see it on the plans.
You didn't like my Vanna?
No.
Let us turn.
I don't know how to use Apple.
There's, go down there now.
I'm sorry, you want me to do it?
No, I'm just doing you to practice. I don't know if there's any questions I can answer at this time.
You said where the addition is going, that's currently the driveway?
That's currently the driveway, yeah. And there's gonna be driveways from, basically from here where the doors are now for the garage, all the way to here. So we're adding the addition, and then the garage doors will be on that side.
Underneath.
Yeah, underneath, yeah. And again, the addition's actually set back from the house, so the addition's actually at 70. It's still not conforming, but it's pushed back. So just for curbing, I thought it looked better to push it back instead of keeping the wall and making it look like just a straight box. So it's pushed back a little bit.
Can you see the picture again?
Of the house?
Yeah, of the driveway.
Here's a, here, that's, that's the driveway there.
So the garage is gonna be larger?
The current garage is gonna be used for storage, and then we're gonna create a new garage in front of that.
So this is gonna be pushed.
Pushed forward, yeah. I can actually show you on the architectural plans.
Do you have any problems on this, on this side yard?
Side yard, no. And we actually spoke to the neighbor, and they had no problems with the addition. Because it does impact them the most, but we don't need a side yard variance, we need a front yard. But we did speak with them.
Any questions, board? Let the record show that there is no one to speak in opposition to the application. I move that we close the public hearing.
Chairman Ken Cooper.
Aye.
Tony Giardina.
Aye.
Howard Dobbs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to motion that the application for three front yard variances by Michael Michel Mabatini. And the variance required would be for the front steps. 75 feet is required. They want it proposed to be at 56 feet, 19-foot variance for their proposed front porch, where 75 feet is required. They're gonna be at 59 feet, which will be creating a 16-foot variance. And for the garage bedroom addition, also 75 feet. They're proposing 70 feet, which is a five-foot variance. I make a motion that we approve these variances for the following reasons. This is a legally existing non-conforming house. It's only one, a little over one acre, a two-acre zone. It's a rather small house for the neighborhood. And granting the variance will enhance the look of the house, be more in keeping with the neighborhood, and will not be creating adverse impact in the neighborhood. You know what it means other than granting this variance to achieve the desired ends. There will be no physical, no adverse environmental effects by granting this variance. This is a self-created hardship in, technically, but given the circumstances of being non-conforming, it is really something that we don't need to consider. And if you can give us foundation surveys prior to framing, start within six months and finish within a year, I move we grant it.
A second.
Chairman Ken Cooper.
Aye.
Tony Giardina.
Aye.
Howard Dobbs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
I move that the board adopt the meeting minutes for the March 29th meeting.
One second, Ted.
Aye.
Tony Giardina.
Aye.
Howard Dobbs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're off.